Call this meeting of the Ripon City Council Tuesday, December 10th, 6:00 PM. Call a meeting to order. Who do we want to have this? Mr. Rastusia will lead us in the pledge.
Glad you took your time with that one.
Well, I have to make it last a lot if I can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let's do it one more time so it takes a little longer.
No.
Mr. Zeiderbart.
Dear Father, we just thank you for this group of people here this evening, the elected officials and city staff. Thank you for the blessings you've bestowed upon the city. Be with us this evening as we make decisions for the betterment of this community and as to follow your will, Lord. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Councilmember Mike Rastusia.
Present.
Dean Eufer.
Here.
Daniel DeGrasse.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jake Parks.
Here.
Mayor Leo Zuber.
Here.
Is Tricia gonna do this? Why not? Oh, Jesus.
Yeah, we're changing now.
All right. Lisa, have at it.
Alrighty, we will do our council reorganization as dictated in the Ripon Municipal Code. It states that the designated mayor and vice mayor must be queried to accept or decline the position. So Jake Parks, do you wish to serve in the position of mayor?
I do.
Do you have a choice in this?
He does, but...
Daniel DeGrasse, do you choose to... Do you wish to serve in the position of vice mayor?
I would be honored to.
Okay, so per the code, it states that the council seats will be noted as it was on the agenda. Seat one will be the mayor, Jake Parks. Seat two, Vice Mayor Daniel DeGrasse. Seat three, Dean Eufer. Seat four, Mike Rastusia. And seat five, councilmember Leo Zuber.
I thought I was going to put it down there.
Sneak. He's getting nervous.
He's nervous.
Well, this mouse has never been used, neither's a computer.
Pretty much true.
Need some help, Jake?
No, I'm good. So, I will now open up the public discussion to any members of the public who would like to comment on anything not on the agenda. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public discussion. I will now... We will now move to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minute.
I do.
Leo, do it. Motion carries. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything?
I do.
Leo? Yes, which one?
1.2B. 1.2I.
I.
1.2N.
N.
Isn't that the longest 1.2 we've had all year? And 1.4D.
1.4D. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Tag it.
Okay, motion carries. Move on to the approval of the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve as amended.
Tag it.
Okay, Councilman Zuber.
1.2D.
For 1.2D is the Aspen survey, set of invoices. The last invoice was for a handicap ramp project on East Main. What is that?
That's the handicap ramp in front of the new Starbucks. Right now, we just put some preliminary drawings together to see if Caltrans would allow us to install a ramp at that location. And if they do, then we were gonna bring forward a council funding plan.
Is it an extension on the corner, or is it gonna be in the...
It's just a handicap ramp in front of Starbucks to allow people to cross north to the Angle Gas Station. So it'd be a handicap ramp and striping for a crosswalk.
Okay. I... As I read that thing, didn't we... We've used about half of the money that was budgeted for this one, for the city. And as far as I can tell from this table, we're done. So do we have plans for the rest of the money?
Are you talking about WGR or Vaughn Construction?
No, I'm talking about Vaughn Construction.
So, yes, right now, that's... Those few were just for city responsibility. As we continue to go throughout the year, every week, we have a new complaint about. So that money will go to if we get any other city responsibility and also if there's anybody that chooses to opt into the loan program. So we have several people that we're waiting to hear back from that haven't made that decision yet.
Okay, so that loan program, how did... We'll pay Vaughn to fix the sidewalk and then the homeowner will pay us back over time?
Correct.
Instead of in a lump sum?
Yes.
Okay. And that was the wrong number. I'm sorry.
No, it was...
Because it's already approved, so we don't have to worry.
And?
And, I don't have a question, I just have a comment in that I think we budgeted $90,000 and we have, as far as I'm concerned, a whole bunch of streets and intersections that look a whole lot nicer and probably safer. There are places in town where there were no lines in the streets until this was done. So it's... I'm glad we did it and I... But there's still a lot more, so I'm hoping we have opportunities in the future to continue to do this. But thank you. You picked... What you picked needed to be picked, so thank you.
They did a good job.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then 1.4D. I got something from Kai that sort of explains it. I get my question was that the language in the amendment was pretty loose about what could and couldn't, would and wouldn't be put inside. And I have been in a few of these places and what's in there is not attractive over time. But the form and things that Kai gave me, at least it's a good place to start and hopefully... I think the people behind Rage are good people and I'm not worried, but I worry that you get to the point that you wish you'd done something because it's too late. But I think we'll be all right, so I'm good with it. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the four items that were pulled. Just a minute, I gotta get my... All right. Not used to this.
Yep. You're me.
Ted, you can come up here.
You got a big crowd, that's why.
He's very shy.
Make sure you get him in the center so he's right there on camera.
Uh-huh, that's right.
While you've got him up there, can I run into his office? It's still all of his C's candy.
It's all gone.
It's James' office now.
Oh.
Parting gift to James.
Ted, before I would begin, I would just like to say you embody some of the best characteristics of Riponites and the city staff here. You're hardworking, you're stoic, you're very trustworthy, and you have always been somebody that I've relied upon here to kind of help guide me through the city of Ripon and kind of educate me on the way that things are done, especially when it comes to water and sewer. And so, thank you very much. So, whereas for 42 years Ted Johnson has dedicated himself to the highest standards of professionalism and excellence as a City of Ripon employee, and whereas Ted was hired on August 18th, 1977 with the City of Ripon Public Works Department, and whereas in 1977 Ted started as a garbage collector and advanced through the various assignments, and in 1986 Ted was moved from a maintenance worker to a building inspector. In 92, Ted was promoted to public works supervisor, and in 99, Ted was promoted to director of public works and the building official. Ted has committed himself to serving the community of Ripon, always going above and beyond what was expected. He has provided exceptional service while maintaining city parks, streets, water, sewer, and storm systems, and providing solid waste collection services. He was also responsible for a number of programs that have greatly benefited Ripon and will continue to come and will continue for years to come, including curbside yard waste pickup, community garbage sales, and large item pickup programs. Ted has distinguished himself as a hardworking and faithful public servant at all times, committed to helping his community and administering regulations with a sense of fairness, and has provided invaluable leadership and guidance on many significant projects. Ted's greatest accomplishment while working with the City of Ripon is the Missland Sports Park, where he played a key role in designing and installing the turf and irrigation systems for this important regional park that now attracts thousands of visitors each year to the City of Ripon. Ted will be sorely missed by colleagues in the community, but he has earned the title of retiree. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Ripon, speaking on behalf of all of our people, publicly expresses our sincere appreciation for Ted Johnson for his outstanding contributions to the community, maintaining the highest standards of excellence both personally and professionally, and providing an example for others to follow. Accordingly, we extend our best wishes to him for many years of health and happiness in retirement. Thank you very much, Ted.
Thank you. So, when you retired, I got ahold of Heath, Assemblyman Flora, and asked him if he'd be, you know, okay to give you a proclamation for your retirement, and it was absolutely he would. Jason would be here tonight, so I'm wearing Flora's shirt because he asked me if I would present it to you. So I want you to know, you've got even a bigger one coming that's gonna be brass around the sides, but it takes like three weeks to get it from Sacramento, so I don't have that for you tonight. But I just want to tell you, Ted, I know you're probably 30 years and all the niceties that everybody said to you at your retirement in here, I can't add anything to other than that, other than you've been a really, you know, great employee, but you've been as good as a friend as anybody could ever ask for. You may be retired, but you're still gonna be a friend. So it was my honor to be asked to present this to you. So it says here, "Ted Johnson, 42 years of service, City of Ripon. On behalf of California State Assembly, I would like to congratulate you for your outstanding service and dedication to the City of Ripon. Best wishes as you begin those pleasant, well-deserved years of retirement. It is a great privilege and honor to represent you. Congratulations presented on the stage, Heath Flora." And so in about three or four weeks, you'll get a big one and it'll be very nice, so...
Thank you.
No speeches?
Speech!
Thank you.
Congrats.
Yeah. Ted, you are staying for the rest of the meeting, right?
There's still more. He's got more coming.
He's retired, man.
No, he's not. Have you looked at that?
Boy, you can tell Dan takes pictures. Holy smoke, he just ate up all my film.
Looking for a water report here, surely.
He doesn't care.
Yeah. We'll now move on to Resolution 2A. This policy adopts a tree removal pol... This resolution adopts a tree removal policy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is kind of a follow-up to our September 19th meeting, our 2019 meeting. We were directed by the council to bring back a tree removal policy, and this kind of stemmed from those trees being removed on Jacktown Road. So staff went ahead and put together a policy, and in general, it is related to the trees that are within the public right-of-way that the city is responsible for maintaining. So the removal, or when staff, I guess, is recommending within this policy to remove a tree, is pretty basic. It's when trees are dead, when trees are diseased. There's a hazard or public... To the public, or necessary root removal would render it hazardous. Any sidewalk conflicts, property damage, things of that nature. If it's necessary for any city improvement projects, causing extensive damage, traffic hazards, when deemed in the opinion of the City of Ripon Police Department that they are traffic hazards, and then just any other emergency tree removal for safety reasons. So with that, the... I guess at the end of that, when possible, trees would be replanted. The ones on Jacktown, we obviously replanted, or we are in the process of replanting what we can. So with that, that's our policy. Looking for any feedback from the council and I'll answer any questions you may have.
So, Councilman Zuber.
I just have, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but as I read this policy, the situation we found ourselves in with those trees on Jacktown Road, this policy doesn't cover that.
That's correct.
So in effect, if that happens again, according to this policy, those trees are staying.
That's right.
And I just want everybody to understand that, that the next guy who rolls in here and says, "These trees are making a mess in my yard or messing up my life," this policy, as I read it, precludes us from taking them out.
Correct. Sorry.
I just thought if you could read it under item six, tree removal would be the one that it would fall under.
Well, but... Okay, so are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, so let me just make a comment. First of all, you're right. And what I like about this is it... There's eight areas that are specific that staff can say it doesn't meet these requirements. If somebody wants to appeal it like this, they can appeal it, but staff says, "Look, it's not dead, it's not diseased, it's not dirting anything, it's not causing a problem." It's very clear where it stands. And so I like what you've put here, and I think if we would've had this in place the entire time, it still would've been appealed to here and we would've made a decision at that time. But I think it's good we have this in place. I like it.
The one thing that... We had a lot of discussions about this and how to address that. The one thing I would say, if there was some sort of nuisance from the tree that was causing some sort of property damage, if a sap is coming off the tree or whatever it is, if you could relate it back to a property damage or a safety issue, it could be addressed in that standpoint.
Well, and I think you're right, but I don't want nuisance used because what it's a nuisance to me may not be to you, and it's so open. I think it's one of those things that we need to take a look at if somebody brings it in.
And that's what got hard for us to try to...
Yeah, that's my opinion.
My only concern, I... And maybe it's just a personal thing with me, I hate operating by exception. Because as soon as you do that, the thing that you're depending on now is the memory of the staff and the memory of the council. Why did it work this time and it didn't work last time? What's different this time than it was last time? If there are three different people sitting up here than there were last time and the decision's different. If you're gonna have a policy, have a policy. But the idea that you're adopting a policy with the understanding that anybody who doesn't like it gets to come to the council and basically ask them to override it, then why have a policy?
Counsel, isn't that true with everything we do? Anybody can come here and ask whatever they want, right?
Yeah, what I was gonna say is, you know, the law requires us to maintain our trees. And what this policy, as I read it, does is it says, "Under these certain conditions, then the city should be removing trees. If a tree is dead, we should remove the tree." This policy, to me, reiterates common sense and it reiterates what the law is. If we are causing extensive damages to property, then we need to address those issues. So I think this policy is a good policy. I don't think it operates by exception. I think if somebody says the tree doesn't fall within one of these categories, but it's causing an issue for me, then you can look at it and say, "Is it creating a legal nuisance that we have to address?" We'd have to address it anyway. But this is removal. That's not... There's a lot of other ways to address issues. This is simply talking about removal conditions, the conditions that would warrant removal by the city. That doesn't mean that there isn't gonna be something else that might come up later that we need to address, but we can't address every potential eventuality in any policy.
But the word nuisance doesn't appear in this policy at all.
Correct. And correct, and that's where I think it's very important that somebody can say there's a nuisance, that does not mean it falls within this policy requiring removal. It just would require... If anybody comes to us and says, "Hey, we have a problem with something that your property is creating," then we need to look at it. That's not operating by exception. I think that's just responding to changing conditions over time. But very clearly, nuisance is not in here, nuisance does not require removal. You're right.
But that's such a broad definition, whatever a nuisance is. I'm glad it's not in there, quite frankly, but I agree. But anybody can come at any time and ask us to overturn anything. We don't have to, but if we don't ask them at the door, "What are you gonna talk about? I wanna talk about removing trees." Well, if you were already told by staff it doesn't get out, I mean, they can come and do whatever they want. Doesn't mean we have to address it.
Correct.
Now, what my concern is, there is a very public record that we removed, how many? 60 trees that did not violate this policy.
So...
And so why, the next time the guy or gal comes in here and says, "I want these three removed," for the same reason, how are you gonna say no?
Well, but I'll say, you very clearly made a comment at the last meeting when we passed it, "We need a policy going forward so we don't do the same thing." I remember you saying that.
I know.
I thought that was the right thing to do. Well, so whatever we did before the policy, we didn't have a policy in place, so...
I would also say that precedent does not mean you... Something that you did in the past does not mean that that is the ultimate governance for what happens in the future. Things change, circumstances change, there's a lot of conditions that may result in a different decision. First and foremost, as Councilmember Rastusia just said, we now have a policy that talks about when the city is going to remove trees. Anything outside of this policy, we have an obligation to look at on a case-by-case basis and decide if you want to do anything about it, if it makes sense, and if it's something you feel is appropriate. Doesn't mean you have to. Just because you did something in the past doesn't mean you have to do it in the future. We have to look at every circumstance individually. And I know you don't want to operate by exception, but I don't think that's operating by exception. I think that's giving every circumstance that do concern an evaluation that it deserves.
I don't disagree with the policy. This is gonna come up again. I'm gonna be real interested in the result.
It's already asked, Ken. I've gotten phone calls already. Now people are calling because they took them out. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I like them without trees, actually.
I mean...
Can make everybody happy.
But the bottom line is, people wait till after it's done. We've been dealing with this for months.
Well, for years.
Years. I mean, yeah, years. I mean, I've got...
When I was on the council before, we were dealing with it.
Health hazard and it was causing repeated extensive damage, but...
I'll move that we adopt the policy.
So we've got a motion on the floor? We've got a second?
Well done. Does that go to Stacy or does that go to Ken?
No.
Or a P's? Jam.
Motion carries.
Oh, James. Hey, congratulations.
On to 2B. This resolution establishes a revised planning agency fee schedule which adds sidewalk vendor permits to the fee schedule.
That's it?
That's it?
That's it.
Look at that, done. This is efficient.
This is my favorite meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
So my question is, how much is it? Ken, do you have it in there? I saw it earlier, but I can't find it now.
250.
Okay, so the only question I always ask every single time, is that enough money to cover the cost of bus station and permit?
Yeah, we actually did a time analysis of what it would take to process through and actually even also compared it to several other cities that have similar applications in pro... For the progress or that process, and we're fairly in line with those as well, too.
We should be a lot higher than they'll go in any other city.
Anybody else? All right, do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of staff on 3... Excuse me, 2B.
We've got a motion and we've got a second. Onto the public hearings, 3A. This is a public hearing on the annual report of public facilities finance planning, capital fees covered under Government Code Section 66,000, recommended action review and approve the annual PFFP report for the period ending June 30th, 2019.
Like, Ken, that's correct. There is a staff report that goes along with this as well that provides information to the council regarding the PFFP annual report and the requirements under that Government Code section, along with how this report ties to the fund summary balances report as of June 30th, 2019. This PFFP report has been prepared in accordance with all the requirements of the Government Code Sections 66,000. So the action, as you noted from council, is to approve the annual report of capital fees for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. It is a public hearing and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions? So, Councilmember Rastusia.
So the only thing I want to say, I went through all the math and I don't know if this is how you always put it together, but this was very easy for me to follow. I don't know where all the numbers come from, but it was really easy for me to follow and the math always made sense, so I don't know what else to say.
Well, it should be your number two.
Councilman Zuber.
I just want to make sure I'm right in my understanding of this. If, for some reason, projects came up that could spend all of the money from all of the accounts that are positive, we couldn't do that, right? Because half of the money is owed to the negatives. So of the $11 million that's supposedly in there, really only about, I think if I did it right, it's five and a half million is available to spend. The rest of it, we won't have until we collect all the fees from the negative ones. Is that right?
That's correct.
And all of it is tied up right here. Just... It's the thing that's bugged me for seven years and I just want to keep reminding people that we've got a problem if this thing ever got all spent. Not for what we paid to build it.
We will now open up the public hearing to members of the public. If anybody in the public would like to comment on this particular item, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing section and open it back up to the council.
Do we approve this thing?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the report as presented.
So we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second?
You're sitting right next to him. Throw something at him.
You got a glass full of water.
All right. Now move on to 4A. This ordinance amends Chapter 1304, Water Systems Service of the Ripon Municipal Code. Who would like to take it?
Me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's right, that's back to you. Yep.
So in September 2018, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill 998...
And all of it is tied up right here. Just, it's the thing that's bugged me for seven years and I just want to keep reminding people that we've got a problem if this thing ever got all spent. Not for what we paid to build.
We will now open up the public hearing to members of the public. If anybody in the public would like to comment on this particular item, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing section and open it back up to the council.
Do we, do we approve this thing?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the report as presented.
So we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? We have a second?
You're sitting right next to him. Throw something at him.
Now move on to four A. This ordinance amends chapter thirteen oh four, water system service of the Ripon municipal code. Who would like to take it?
Me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's right. That's back to you. Yep.
So in September two thousand and eighteen, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill nine ninety-eight, which adds requirements to community water systems that have more than two hundred service connections, which we totally fall under. So currently there are areas of our, our municipal code that are inconsistent with this Senate bill. The proposed ordinance includes, includes changes to make, that are necessary to be in compliance with this Senate bill, cleans up the outdated language currently as part of the code and does, or makes for two policy changes being recommended to City Council of consideration this evening. These policy changes are regarding the water service outside city limits and connections to the city services. The water services outside city limits is addressed in section thirteen oh four, four eighty, which currently does not allow water service to be extended outside city limits except upon the written recommendation of the city administrator and the approval of the city council. So it would be, as you noted earlier, would be an exception. So staff is recommending that any extension of water outside of city limits be prohibited. The second policy is the connection to city services and that's in section thirteen oh four, zero, three, zero, which currently does not specify when a dwelling would be required to connect to the city's water system. This section has been revised to require a property owner to connect when city services are available within two hundred feet from the nearest property line of the parcel. Exceptions to this would be if the property owner has an onsite well that was permitted prior to January first, twenty twenty, or the city and the property owner have an existing agreement that provided an exception to this. In addition, according to Senate Bill nine ninety-eight, the reconnection of service fees shall not exceed fifty dollars or the actual cost of reconnection. We did a calculation that our actual costs of staff time to reconnect the services would be twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, so we are increasing that fee, which is currently twenty-six dollars, to twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Open it up to the council. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one.
Councilman Zuber?
If, this is a change to an ordinance.
Correct.
So this is first reading, second reading in January, it would become effective sometime in February.
That's correct.
As the new ordinance is constituted, then if somebody comes in here with a reason that everybody seems to feel is legitimate, to have water extended outside the city limits, the only way that could happen would be to change the ordinance.
Or they, or they get annexed into the city.
Or what?
Or to be.
Right. In other words, this is not one of those things where they can come in here and get us to say, in spite of the ordinance, we're going to do it anyway.
Right.
All right. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, the intent.
Because we've had people come in and ask before and.
The intent of this is really if they're implied water service, they should be annexed into the, into the city with all, all the services that go along with it.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. Do we need, do you need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We, we wait the first reading, introduce, is that what we do?
Exactly.
Okay, we got a mover, we got a second. Motion carries, five, nothing. Moving right along. Five A discussion items. It's Red Flex traffic system.
It's right up there for you.
Is this Kai? Oh, nope, this is Chief.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be addressing this item. This is a red light camera discussion in action. As the council knows, over the past year or so, the city has been combating cut-through traffic during peak travel time, typically between four PM and six PM, as traffic detours off of Highway ninety-nine southbound and comes through Ripon, through West Ripon Road to make access towards the Main Street over crossing to rejoin Highway ninety-nine southbound at that location. Earlier in the beginning of November, the city took an aggressive approach to meter, cut-through traffic at West Ripon and Jackton Road to avoid some of the congestion problems that we were receiving on South Stockton, Main Street, Second Street, and all the way down to Fourth Street. Part of that was limiting the green light, yellow light, and then extending the red light for eastbound traffic on West Ripon Road entering the city. And at that point in time, we were seeing that the metering was having a positive impact, but what we were doing is seeing several violations of red light runners due to the shortened green and yellow light timeframes. November sixth, we decided to station a patrol officer at that location to monitor the violations as those numbers increased of red light runners. The first week or so monitoring the intersection, we had an officer stationed at the northwest corner and alternating between there and the southwest corner to monitor the red light runners and the traffic signal via, turning to red. At that point in time, our patrol officer that was assigned at that location was making anywhere from three to five traffic stops per hour for the two hours that they were stationed there. It caused a couple of different issues. First of all, we were, we were finding that when they were making a traffic stop on a red light violation, that several other vehicles were running the red light and no officer was present to be able to enforce the violation. Because they were busy conducting the traffic stops and the minutia of a traffic stop, sometimes it could extend to ten to fifteen minutes depending on other violations, vehicle toes and so forth. So we were monitoring and counting. We were estimating that there were approximately twenty red light violations at that intersection for eastbound traffic per hour. And again, we were only able to capture three to five with one officer there monitoring that intersection. As the weeks progressed, some of the violations were reduced, but we were still seeing an abnormally high number of red light violations at that intersection. And we started looking at alternatives to address the violations other than positioning or stationed an officer at that intersection. During minimum staffing time, it becomes problematic for the department to position an officer there for the indefinite future. So we needed to come up with a solution that we could still have the safety concerns of the violations be addressed, but also do it without necessarily stationing an officer at that intersection. So we started looking at the red light cameras and there were at least thirteen cities within our geographical area that were using Red Flex traffic cameras. They're based out of Redwood City. And so we reached out to them and actually had a phone conversation, conference call with them to discuss what that would entail. They haven't been out to this, our city to do a site review, but they estimated that one red light camera for that intersection would run anywhere between four thousand and forty-five hundred dollars per month. If there were any additional cameras, that price would double if it was, depending on the amount of cameras. If you wanted one for east and westbound, it would be eight to nine thousand dollars per month and so forth. At this point in time, we think that the, having one installed for the eastbound traffic, which is our main concern at this point in time, would be appropriate and would be enough. We don't believe that all four directions need to be monitored as off, off of, outside of peak traffic times, we are not seeing the number of violations that we do during that four to six PM Monday through Friday. So we did complete a staff report that is in your packet. Before we get to the questions, we do have a short video that we would like to show the council, the members of the public that are present, some of the violations that the officers were witnessing. I will clarify that in the video, not all of the vehicles being stopped are, are receiving citations. Some are, some aren't. It depends on the house. When the violations occurred, the first week or so, they were pretty liberal in, in issuing warnings. And then as the weeks progressed, more citations are being issued for those violations. So we were trying to be fair and appropriate in when we issue those, although any motorist should know that when the traffic signal turns red, he should stop. But because of the, the changing in the, in the timing of the lights, we wanted to make sure that we were fair in that application. So if I could have Dan. Now these, again, are from officers' video dash cameras. Can you pause it real quick?
Sure.
So just to kind of set it up, we have a patrol officer using his dash cam video recorder parked near the K rail on the northwest corner facing the intersection so they can see the violation and see the traffic signal cycling. Our IT administrator has placed a graphic on the bottom right to kind of coordinate so you don't have to look at the, the traffic signal turn. You can see at the bottom right, when it turns red, it coordinates with the, the traffic signal going eastbound and then you can see the violation goes through. So would you mind, you can go ahead and just play it from there. As you can see, these are pretty, pretty blatant violations. The ones that are more obvious are the ones that were receiving citations initially. Some of them that are on the fringe were receiving the verbal warnings.
Come on, Jake, why'd you do that?
Yeah, one of those cars was red.
Red Sonata.
Oh, yeah. Close.
My daughter. Turns yellow, turns red.
Yep.
There's a double banner.
Yeah, which way do you go there?
Yeah.
As you can see on that one in particular.
Chase the ride going out of town.
Well, particularly on that one, as you can see, the, the light for the other direction was already green. And this kind of shows you the safety aspect of the officers that have to enter the intersection when there's other directions that are green. Some of the safety concerns that installing a red light camera, we won't have to deal with so much. There's a lot going on. As you see, we have to avoid traffic in other directions and some of these are pretty tight turns. There's even a tighter one that's coming up here. But there's a lot of different concerns that we have to be worried about, other than observing a violation and then going after the violator to make sure that we're safe and the other vehicles in the intersection are safe.
There's a bad one. Hey, how much is, is a red light stop ticket?
The red light violation site fine amount is set by legislation and in our, in the state of California, it is four hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
And what do we get of that?
We get approximately eight percent, which is sixty-one dollars.
So we got to write a lot of tickets to pay for that camera. But we also save a lot of money on putting, not having an officer there though, right?
So Chief, what, how long is the orange light on for? How many seconds?
Yellow.
Yellow.
Yellow, seven seconds.
So they have plenty of time to.
Yes.
To see that and.
Those guys are red.
Correction, it was, it's five, it was.
Is that on our?
Five seconds, correct.
I thought we bumped it up a little bit.
Well, you have, you have, the green light was seven, the yellow was five.
There was like four colors.
Five, okay.
Yeah. Yes. Initially, the yellow light was about three seconds and we did extend that to five. And then we also extended the, the time between the red light and the other direction green light.
Right.
Make sure that the intersection is clear, so.
So if you, how many tickets do you think you'd write a month if, if we put the camera up? I mean, estimate based on what you see here.
I would, I would probably estimate that, you know, if, if you're, if you're looking at, say you're getting ten to fifteen per hour, that'd be thirty per day. So in your, doing it, well, the peak travel times are Monday through Fridays, so five times. So you maybe, maybe what, a hundred and fifty?
So a hundred and fifty, so six hundred a month.
And see what it drops down to once it's up.
Right.
Six hundred a month at sixty bucks, is that what you said we get?
Sixty-one oh five.
Sixty, so we would get thirty-six hundred bucks a month. So it would not quite cover the cost, but it'd get close. I mean, that, I'm looking at payback.
Well, you, you also have to think that, or understand too, that just because the red light camera identifies a violation, there's a slew of other steps that have to go into confirming that. You have to confirm that the, that the violation meets our standard, then the driver has to be identified and at that point in time, the citation goes out. Then they have the opportunity to contest it internally, within the police department, they can contest it. And then if they're not satisfied, they can test it through a court. So you have to understand that just because a citation is issued through the red light camera, doesn't mean you're going to get a paid fine or conviction on it.
Yeah, I had a friend get one and it shows him smiling in the camera and it shows where the cameras, where the lights were at. I mean, pretty hard to get out of those.
So there's, there's another community north of us that uses it and if I remember correctly, about thirty-five percent of the citation viola, or the violations that the camera picks up, about thirty-five percent actually get the citation in the mail.
That's it.
Yes. Because there's a lot of things you have to verify and it's, it's not just the camera picked it up and you get it, you get one citation mailed through the mail, out to them. So there's a lot of different steps. Part of that four thousand or forty-five hundred dollars, depending on what Red Flex does, Red Flex takes care of all that for you. So.
That was my question.
They would verify the site, the violation to make sure it meets our standards. They would identify the driver. Once they, once they completed their process, they would send a package to us. We would do the final evaluation at that point in time. And then once we gave the final okay, then the citation would be mailed out. And then they would take, they would coordinate with the courts and the fine amount, collecting the fine amounts.
Another question. So I got a little confused because it said it recommended two and then all your numbers were based on one camera, so I got kind of confused what the overall real cost was.
I'm only recommending one, which would be the four to forty-five hundred per month for camera.
The thing you got to take into consideration is the safety factor of, we're jeopardizing our police officers in a sense. And then I, they get pulled over in front of my office all the time and a lot of these peoples that pull over, they're, I don't mean to be rude, but they're idiots. They're parked out in the street, people can't get around them. They don't even get out, you know, they could go into the, you know, usually you get pulled over, you try to get off the road.
Why don't you put a little sign there? Into your parking lot. Into your parking lot. Free parking.
Your insurance rates won't go up.
I, I would, I would agree with you that there's a lot of safety factors that come into it, other than the initial violation of running a red light.
Well, exactly, which is obviously not a good thing. That's where more people die than anything.
And, and I will say, the, initially when the, the metering started, that was probably one of the biggest complaints. Wasn't that we were out there monitoring it, it was the amount of people that were continuing to run it. And as you see the, with the video, that's just a handful of, I, I think probably in the first ten days that we were out there, a handful of them that we, we selected to put down there. But each day you can go through video and they're very similar to that, where people, the longer people wait, the more impatient they get, the more bold they get in, in running the red light. And what we, what we see is like today, very little backup out there, not many violations. So people are getting through in one to two cycles. When it tends to get to, to four cycles and they're waiting, people will press through even if they, it may be turning red. And usually that, it all depends on what the traffic is doing on ninety-nine. If the traffic gets down to below twenty-two miles an hour on the, on the highway, we expect a, a lot of vehicles coming through West Ripon. Today. Today, at 4:30, traffic was still hovering around 36, very little cut through traffic because they're all staying on the highway.
Well, and I'll tell you, right now, December's a pretty slow month. I mean, I travel around to the Bay area quite a bit, and it's just, for some reason, it's a slow month, this month with a lot of traffic. The other thing it does too, though, is that if you give a ticket, one of your cops give a ticket, and they challenge it, then he's got to take time off to go to court, too. So, right? I mean, if he wants to...
That is correct. If, if a citation was issued through the red light camera, our officer would still be responsible for going to court. So that doesn't alleviate that.
So and officer, whoever's on duty.
Yes.
All right, Councilman Zuber.
You mentioned a couple of times that part of the process is they have to identify the driver.
Correct.
Because if I let Jake use my vehicle, and Jake runs the red light, he gets the ticket, not me. So how do they figure out who's driving that vehicle?
I try to research the best I can to identify that person.
Because I'm guessing that's why the percentage goes down.
Yes, that is correct. If I, if I may, if you're interested, you have to post the data on your website, make that available so people can see. Some of the, some of the items that come about that citations don't get mailed out to the violator, it could be invalid offense, plate is unidentifiable, police discretion, there's a safe stop on red, but the camera picked it up anyways, the safe turn on red, sun glare, plate not in frame, the scene image, there was no flash to identify. The list kind of goes on, there's, there's a lot of different things. But they also have, they also have a couple of items that consist of obstruction, which means driver obstructed or duckers. They know they're running the red light, and they duck the camera, they're wearing motorcycle helmets, and so forth. There's, so there's ways around it, so it's not a foolproof system, and, but we're hoping that it would make the intersection more safe, and we can better use our resources in other places to keep our community well patrolled.
So is, are we being asked to approve this, or to tell you to go get more information and bring it back?
We could do whatever the council desires. The staff report is a recommendation to approve one camera for the eastbound traffic on West Ripon Road.
And it would run about 4,500 a month?
Is that a lease?
Four to 4,500.
Is that like an annual lease, six months?
It would, it would be a monthly lease, and the Red Flex Corporation would be responsible for maintenance, calibration, and so forth. So there, all the backend would be encompassed in that, in that price. It'd be, they do traditionally five-year contracts, they said they'd be willing to do a minimal of a three-year contract. At that point in time, you'd be able to determine if you're going to re-up or discontinue the application.
How do we know if it's four, four, 4,500 dollars a month? Basically, we're signing off on $144,000 expense is what we're doing.
Yes, you, I would recommend that if you approve it, you approve it with the higher dollar amount, until we, they come out here and assess the area.
But if we do the lower amount, they may say, well, fine, if we're going to make a trip out there, we'll, we'll accept it.
Whatever the council desires.
So I won't pay a dime past $4,000.
They would have to come out here, assess the accessibility, electricity, if there is going to be any digging to install the equipment and so forth. That's why there's a, there's a variation.
They put it on a light, is that what they do, Dan? They put it up on a light?
Usually on their own pole.
Their own pole?
Typically, typically, it's their own poles, but that's why they have to come out and assess the intersection.
And with council's direction, we'll have them come out and assess the intersection, and then bring a contract back versus a council approval, with all the details of what's being approved.
Well, that's what I'd like to make the motion, is that we approve, pursuing this thing with the idea that at the January meeting, we need to do something. That intersection is on the verge, if not already, out of control as far as this. I get people telling me all the time that they pull up to that thing, and they're almost afraid to drive out there because people are accelerating to get through that.
I've had several clients...
When I sat out there and looked, and I'm telling you, I'm surprised there haven't been any accidents.
I don't have a problem with the money, but I would like to know what we're getting into, rather than approving.
That makes sense.
So make your motion, I'll say that.
Well, we direct the chief...
I've got two comments, well, two questions for you. No, no, no.
If you make a motion, you got to stop.
So Ed, what do you think the probability is, or not probability, but what do you think, you said you see 20 a day during the really busy times? What do you think when we install that, it's going to drop down to, just even just a rough guesstimate? I apologize if you already said it, I might have missed it.
Um, you would hope, you would hope, and that's part of, that's part of the reason why I'm requesting that it be approved, is as a deterrent. But as you can see, the officers aren't hiding when they're out there enforcing it.
Oh, no.
And it, and it's not really having an impact, even though that they're clearly visible at the intersection. So the, the idea is that it would eventually be a deterrent. It would go on the apps that people are using for cut through, it would be designated as a red light intersection, so hopefully that would either be a deterrent for people going through it, or it would cause them to stop when the traffic signal turns red. So you could eventually have very minimal red light runners, which that's what we want, that's what we're trying to come up with, because drivers that are coming through, they aren't doing it on their own.
And then there's no state funding for anything like this, no, nothing along those lines? State programs?
No, not at this point. There are some communities that are doing away with their programs because of the sheer, sheer cost. The one, the one community that I was referring to with their report is, actually has a much lower lease rate, but they're doing all the, all the legwork on the front end. They're getting all the violations coming directly to them, they're identifying the registered owner, they're trying to identify drivers, they're going through the, all the process that Red Flex would be doing for us. They don't offer that option anymore, but this is a city that's been doing it for quite some time, so they have a much lower lease rate, and so they're still doing it. Some of the other cities that have participated in red light cameras say that they tend to cause more accidents because people are stopping quickly, quickly, and people are getting rear-ended. The cities that I've talked to aren't really experiencing that. But again, they're having, even though 35% are being validated, they're getting over, over 2,000 a month, red light runners, at their major intersections. As you can see, it's an epidemic, it's not just through traffic here in Ripon.
Well, Matt Deek has got some problem.
Make your motion.
I would move that we authorize the chief or the staff to pursue the installation, but to bring back to the council a firm contract for final action at the January meeting.
Got a move, or we got a second? Motion carries. Moving on, 5B. Staff is recommending the city council reduce the February 1st, 2020 water rate increase from 11% to 2%, reduce the sewer rate increase from 10% to 2%, and move forward with the 5% garbage rate increase as originally proposed, or approved.
Yes, that's me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a PowerPoint presentation here for you. So here is just a summary of our ending balance, and then our income and expenses for the year, and our transfers. We were able to make a transfer for all three enterprise funds, water, sewer, and garbage, that met our target transfers. And then our ending balance for the fiscal year. And as you see there, the garbage was the only one that was unable to meet the target ending balances. So here's a graph of the water enterprise fund, the actual, and then the projected for this coming fiscal year. And as you see, last year and this year, we're going down to a 2% increase, and it's meeting the targets, the red line is the target there. If you have any questions, you could just speak up.
I have one for the water. No, it's for sewer, I'll wait.
That's next. So sewer, last year, we had a 0% increase, this year, we're proposing a 2% increase. We're still above the target, which is that red line right there for sewer. Here is the garbage, and as you see, that red line is the target, the black line is where we're currently at right now, so we're just below. And all five years, we are recommending the full rate increase, and that was the only enterprise fund that we have been needing to do that for. So just a summary of the rate increases, over the last five years, it total, it was 10%, 10%, 9%. Last year, we had a 3% increase, and this year, we are also proposing a 3% increase overall, and that's for a single-family home. So this is the 2015 rate study, and as you see, the total cost for a customer would have been $117.40, and it would have been 10% increases for fiscal years 16, 17, 18, and 19 and 20, it would have been a 9% increase each of those years. This is our current evaluation, and we have two 10% increases, 9%, then last year was three, and this year, we're proposing three. And so our total, average total for a single-family home is $103.70. And so if that, that's, that's $13.70 a month, which comes out to $164.40, which is comparing what we could be charging them to what we're actually charging them. Is there any questions?
I have a couple. One, if we set the target for the garbage at 600 and something thousand, and if memory serves me correctly, for the last two or three years, it's been this $160,000 figure. Why did we set that target if we're not going to get there? I mean, we're not doing, we're not moving at all.
Yeah, so the, we're only allowed to do a rate increase for as much as that we, we, the Prop 218 allows us to, and so we can't increase the value for our garbage funds even more.
I understand that. But five years ago, when we set this thing, we said we were going to have $630,000 there at the end of five years. We haven't, this year, it's what, 208? And the, and last year, it was about 150 or 160. We're not getting there.
Yeah, and that was because we had lower than projected revenue, and that was just compounded over the, you know, the five years now. And so we're just not where we're at. But next year, we do plan to do another 218 process, and where we try, well, we're addressing those issues with the garbage and get us where we need to be.
And just to expand on that, the problem was that first-year revenue projection. It was, it was lower than what we actually got, and then after that, you have the normal rate increases, but it just compounded every year because you never collected that money, and so you never...
We never, we never made progress.
We never really made progress because we started off behind. And now, I think the last couple of years, we've seen, you know, 30,000, not, not real large increases towards the good and the overall fund balance. But I, I think as we were looking at this over the years, whether to transfer the full capital that we had at least recommended or projected to be transferring, we did always recommend to transfer that full amount, just because the garbage fund is a fund that does not have any debt associated with it, and it's also a very stable fund. The water fund, you see differences in rates depending on use of our customers, the garbage fund doesn't have that, it's a pretty stable fund. So, you know, not meeting the target balance was a relatively low risk, compared to the other funds.
Yeah, as long as we had a fire and got three free garbage trucks, but if we'd had to buy them all ourselves, we'd been in debt.
But the enterprise capital fund would have paid for that. So that's why we were always transferring that 160,000, to make sure that if those type of situations happen, the capital money was there to take care of it.
The other question I have is, I think this is at least the second time, if not more, where we have used less than the amount that was approved back in 2015. And I seem to recall, at some point when this happened, the point was made that if it was approved, it could be used later. Do we lose that ability next year when this five-year period is over? Because, for instance, this year, we had a, what, let's just, 10% raise in water, we're going with two. So there's 8% sitting out there that was approved, but we didn't use. I think last year, we did the same thing. Does that all go away next year? And we have to start all over? Or could we come back and say, you guys said we could do eight, so we're doing eight this year, not last year?
Yes, you, we are still allowed to do those rate increases to the amounts that were approved for the 218 process, even though it goes beyond the year 2020, we're allowed to make those rate increases up to the approved amounts.
My concern is with water especially, the things that the state is sticking their fingers in relative to water, we could need some money sometime, and, you know...
Yeah, and this is all, you know, we're about to start the 218 process again here, our five years is up. So we're planning on using municipal financial services once again. He's the one who advised us about what Elizabeth just said about that we are able to, you know, incorporate those savings into the next 218 process. But obviously, we've got to do it again for the garbage rate.
Right.
So, so we're going, we've got to go through it, he'll look at what that looks like going forward, and then obviously, the legal side of it. Tom and Stacy have not weighed in yet on that with the 218 process. This is, that advice is coming from our financial consultant. So I think we're also going to have Stacy and Tom take a look at that as well.
I'll feel better after they have.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Stusha.
Yeah, I'll sleep better, too. Well, I think the last one, the question I had was, do we lose it? And you just answered the question, we don't. Because my concern was, you know, running a business, as you guys run a business, you kind of rat hole money if you need to. I understand it's public money, because it would have been lost forever, rat hole it in case we come across some extraordinaries and we need something that didn't show up someplace. But if we can always go back, then I'm okay with it. But you sounded like a government employee a little bit earlier. You said, "We're saving the public money," because we didn't go up as much as what we could have there, for the savings.
Maybe she should be wearing that shirt.
Okay.
Oh, that was great.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor for 5B? We've got a mover, and we've got a second.
Oh, wait. I made that motion?
No, Dean did.
No, you did.
No, yeah, you moved it.
5C.
Did the vote come through?
Yeah, it carried.
Oh, all right. I just pugged a button, I didn't know what it was.
Staff to give an update on Stockton Avenue Rehab Project.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's me again. Another PowerPoint for you. So just to give a brief overview, we are reconstructing Stockton Avenue, and this is going to go from Second Street to Doak Boulevard. It does not include the intersection on Second Street. We're going to be replacing a lot of the underground, the water, the storm, the industrial sewer, and a small part of the sewer as well. The project's going to include six-foot wide sidewalks and new 88 ramps, and, but not in front of the mill on Second Street. They will not have sidewalk just because of the proximity to the building to our right of way, we need that room for the road. And we do plan on installing concrete pavers, the whole length. For schedule, we're currently waiting on our E76 letter from Caltrans for, to, for the grant to approve the project. Once we get that letter, we have six months to award the contract to the contractor. So right now, you know, I, we... So right now, you know, I, we believe in the next month or so, we should be hearing back from Caltrans, and then we'll have six months to award after that. We're hoping by April, we'll be able to start construction. And construction could be anywhere from nine months to a year, just depending on what kind of surprises we get with the underground. And that timeframe does include three months dedicated specifically just for the paver installation. This is a sum, this is a summary of the costs, the preliminary engineering and construction. Right now, it's estimated to be at that 4.1 million. Here are the different funding sources for the project. We have the Regional Surface Transportation Program with 1.777 million, and the Measure K renewal with 1.548 million. The remainder 800,000 would be from the City Capital Enterprise Funds, and the, about 15,000 or, or anything above of the estimated value would go to the Street and Road Operating Fund. So the final layout of the street would be one lane in each direction and a two-way left-turn lane. So the picture here is at the southern end of Stockton Avenue. So it's gonna be the same layout, one lane in each direction with a middle-left turn lane. So we're just extending this all the way down to Second Street. The street parking will no longer be available to accommodate this middle-left turn lane. And this middle-left turn lane is necessary to accommodate some truck-turning traffic. On Fourth, turning to Stockton Avenue, right now, they're turning into oncoming traffic, which is relatively dangerous. It stops traffic. So just to accommodate their, them being able to turn without affecting the oncoming traffic, this will benefit them. And also, this middle-left turn lane increases capacity on Stockton Avenue. With the multimodal station coming in, we do feel like the capacity is needed just for the vehicular traffic that we anticipate coming to and from the station. There are gonna be some design impacts, mainly with the parking, since we're removing all street parking. And this is to Silverado and RMC businesses specifically, because they do utilize on-street parking right now. A mitigation option that we are offering to them is to dedicate additional right-of-way to the city. And we would in turn use that additional 10 feet wide minimum to build them on-street parallel parking. So this is the option I've currently given Silverado, and we're waiting to hear back their response. Construction packs for traffic, obviously. We're replacing the road, there's gonna be a lot of construction impacts. This is a major truck route. The truck route is going to remain on Stockton Avenue, we don't plan to change it. We do plan to allow Stockton Avenue to be open throughout construction, two lanes when possible. And when it's not possible, and the contractor has to bring that down for, to one lane, then we expect the contractor to be flagging vehicles, and then open the street back up once construction is completed for the day. The contractor will have the option to work extended night or weekend hours, if it's better with his schedule, and, and for traffic reasons, if it works for him better. We have begun reaching out to businesses to try to mitigate the impact it will have on them, as well as, you know, getting ideas from them, what they think could be done, if they wanna temporary construction access through their property or anything like that. We're talking to those businesses and seeing what we could do to help. There's also impacts because of the schedule, you know. The pavers will take extended amount of time compared to asphalt, 10 weeks compared to a few days for, for the asphalt. But we, we staff do feel like this is necessary just for the longevity of the roadway. The concrete pavers will hold up better to the, the heavy traffic compared to the asphalt. It'll be lower maintenance, and obviously, it'll look a lot nicer. Concrete paver contractor has been, we've been talking, talking to him, and this is something he's done similar projects for, and so he's very comfortable with the schedule and the project, and he doesn't foresee any problems, this is something they've done before. Are there any questions?
Council, have any questions?
In the initial discussion, one of the reasons, or the discussion was, pavers versus asphalt was cost. Am I correct in looking at what you present here, that the two funding sources basically are covering the increased cost, so it's not an issue anymore? As long as we're sure that the costs we're estimating are gonna hold?
So this, the funding sources do cover the costs of the pavers. With, with our City Capital Enterprise funds, we're estimating to be about 800,000, and then a little bit of Street and Road Operating Fund money as well. So this cost that you see here includes the concrete pavers.
But any place we're wrong, in a negative sense, that Street and Road Operating Fund is gonna, is where it's gonna get hit.
Yes.
We can't add to the top two, the only place we have flexibility is the bottom two.
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I would add with that is, Caltrans, we're waiting on our E-76 right now from Caltrans. So once we get that, we're authorized to put, put this out to bid. One of Caltrans' concerns right now is, is using the pavers in lieu of asphalt. So we've given them our, our best, you know, reasoning on why we wanna use, use the pavers versus the asphalt. So basically, they're trying to determine right now if those, if using pavers is a participating expense. If they determine that, the, the grants that we have will cover that cost. It's, it's really just a, a determination by Caltrans, if they feel that those pavers are justified.
So they could come back and say, here's your money, but you will use asphalt?
They, they, they would come back and just say that pavers, if you want to use them, are not a participating expense. And then we would look at the Measure K renewal, which it would be a participating expense within that, or some of our other local funds. So we could still do it, it's just.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, so how do we wanna proceed?
It's just information, I think.
Just information. Yeah, it's, well, no action, so. Okay?
It was just to give you an update, you know, people might start to complaining, especially during construction with the traffic. You know, and so I wanted you to be informed and prepared to answer them or refer them to me.
Thank you. Okay. So as we don't have to take a vote on that, we will move down to 5D. So everybody should, I know Mike's already handed his in, so everybody should have their assignments. No, not handed in, but everybody should have one of the new assignment sheets in front of you. So just getting in for next week, we have, here.
No, I'll find it.
There you go, there you go.
What's the deadline, Mr. Mayor?
So deadline is next week Friday, and Tricia.
Week from this Friday.
A week from this Friday. So, yep, so your current assignments are on the front sheet, and then the, whatever you want on the back. So I will do the best I can to give you what you want, but. No promises. No promises. There are no promises in government.
Sorry, Dean, that check you gave him last night.
That did not work.
He'll probably have his hand out, Dean.
Uh-huh, that's right, Dean, and Dean, you're gonna get, you're gonna get on the golf course again, so. That's right, that's a great nickname for Dean. Quid pro quo Dean. So we will move on to Department head reports.
Chief.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council members of the public. I just have a few items. First of all, I just wanted to inform the council that for the better part of this morning, I was in Stockton, visiting the sites and campuses of several facilities. The Road Home Program, the Gospel Center, Dignity's Alcove, and Stockton Shelter. This is kind of our proactive approach to continue to monitor and reach out to various organizations within our county to work towards resolutions for homeless and transient populations that may be coming into our community. Although we don't have a significant problem, we do have homeless and transient populations in our community. So we're just looking at continued ways to partnership with existing organizations to help those members of our community that do need help. We are in the process of scheduling a collaborative outreach project, which would be, which would include members of those organizations out with staff to approach and assist the homeless and transient populations in our community for the future. So we're hoping to do that before it gets too much colder. But a lot of these organizations have the ability to help us, and that's what today was about, to make sure that we have those communication lanes open, and that we can get people help that need it. There is one scheduled in a nearby community Thursday, which we're gonna participate in, just to kind of see how it's ran, so we can make preparations for when we do hold that type of operation or outreach, outreach project in our community. Secondly, I just want to reiterate that we are still collecting toys and gifts for our Christmas in our community project. We've had great success so far with donations directly to the police department, and through Natural Path Wellness and Ritual Venom and Photography. Les Schwab is also collecting for us up until Monday. We'll be collecting up until next Friday, the 20th. We currently have 12 children in our community that family members, parents, or guardians have reached out to us for assistance. So we are still working on that. And then, just as a reminder, I don't know if anybody else will, will bring it up, but Thursday night, we're partnering with the Chamber and the Fire District for the light parade. It'll be starting at 6:00 PM on Thursday. And for just for our community members that aren't gonna participate in the parade or view it, that there will be traffic delays downtown.
Thank you. Nothing. Mr. Zadovar?
Yeah, just one really quick item. If you guys are bored Monday night, or not a Saints fan or Colts fan, you can come out to the Planning Commission meeting. We have two items on the agenda. One is for the downtown lot on Stockton and Second, the one that the city redevelopment agency used to own. There will be a proposed project for that site. Some pretty nice-looking buildings, in my opinion, that wanna locate there, so that'll be the first item. Second item on the agenda is a rock-climbing gym that is being proposed out by Boat Country, out on some of those vacant land out there, so. Two pretty neat projects, so come join us if you'd like. Monday at 6:00.
Mr. Peace? Nothing to report.
Nothing else to report.
No water report?
Ten state, all this time for nothing.
Dan, would you like to give us a water?
I just wanted to report that it is Kevin's birthday today. I wanna make sure everybody says happy birthday to Kevin.
Happy birthday to Kevin.
You're not getting any kind of legal problems if the council wishes him happy birthday as a unit?
No, we're allowed to say happy birthday.
This morning, he didn't sold it, took him like a day.
Okay, now we can talk about how old he is, because that is a problem. We can just celebrate birth.
When's your birthday?
My birthday is May, May 25th. Write it down. Christmas in May.
We have the meeting then, Mayor?
We're gonna hold it just on that day, we're gonna request Stacy. City Minister?
I just had a quick report on the downtown study, downtown transportation study that we started a few months ago. So our consultant has been working on that. If you recall, this includes the area of Second Street to Acacia, along the Frontage Road to Stockton Avenue by the Fire Department there. So what they're doing is, is looking at all of the streets within that area. What, what's the big picture of improvements? I think we've all recognized, and I think there was a member of the public here last meeting, who, who talked about the conditions of those streets. So recognizing that there's a lot to do there, we also recognize that this is an important area to, to do correct planning, to make sure we thought of everything before we start working on, on some of the projects, or at least trying to get money to, to improve those streets. So they're, they're looking at the, the scope of the work that would be required, what is the cost of doing that, and then ideally, recognize or identify two to five priority projects that we would really focus on to try to go out and fund in some way, whether using funds we've already put aside, grants, et cetera. So staff has met with the consultant and reviewed the, the draft. We provided some comments, and then probably right after the new year, pretty early after the new year, we're gonna schedule a workshop with the city council to go through, through that with the council as well. So just wanted to provide an update to, to the city council on that.
Councilmember Stusha.
Yeah, the only thing I have is, is anybody going to the ribbon-cutting tomorrow for the River Road, McHenry Avenue line of that?
Yeah.
I sent an email to her, told her I couldn't make it.
Okay, I told her I was gonna go, so I'll be there. And then there was something else. The next week, there is a Board of Supervisors Christmas party. You're going, right? I'm going with you, anybody else go? Okay.
We'll meet here at 11:00, right?
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Councilman Euchre?
Only one comment. Chief, are you guys, are you expecting a huge crowd this Friday? Don't we have like a big state championship football game?
Saturday.
Oh, Saturday?
Yes, we are, and we're making preparations to make sure that the parking lot in the area is secure.
That was the only thing I, 'cause I've been getting emails of concerned citizens that they're coming from LA, you know.
We'll man the entrance.
Next, next councilmember.
Councilman Zubor.
I didn't say anything bad.
Two things, one, you're gonna talk about the parade Thursday night? Are you in it?
I actually have a conflict now. Hey, blame work.
No, I'm not.
Blame my work.
It's you.
I know, you can blame me, so. I got, well, I got a notice last week that says I have to be in LA Thursday, so.
This has gotta change. We'll be talking. The other thing I have on this list, there's this groundwater committee. And it, I don't see it on there.
Oh, with SSJAD and Escalon.
Huh? I didn't see it.
No, it's not.
Okay, we can, we can go back.
I have a recommendation for it, he's sitting right next to me, but we'll be.
I'd be honored for the recommendation.
You're there anyway, you might as well be the guy.
It makes sense.
Yeah, that's perfect, so we can, we can go ahead and have that added.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay, perfect, Vice Mayor DeGraff?
As usual, thank you to the members of the public, even though two of them left already.
The two are the most important.
These are hardly members of the public, you're much more than that, but thank you. Other than that? Merry Christmas.
What about the mayor?
And mayor has nothing to report back, so with that.
Except that he's ducking out on Thursday night.
Blame work.
Do we have, can we get a cardboard?
And with that, I will close the city council meeting, and we will open up the successor agency.
So we'll do roll call.
Cardboard Jake.
Director Leo Zubor.
Here.
Mike Ristusha.
Present.
Dean Euchre.
Here.
Vice Chairman Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Chairman Jake Parks.
Here.
And with that, we will open up the public discussion. Any members of the public that would like to come up and make a comment on anything not on the agenda, please do so. State your name and address. Seeing none, we will close the public discussion. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? So we're doing a voice vote, so all those in favor? Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. And with that, we are adjourned till next month.